Testing, good. Yeah. Yes. Great. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the August 14th City of Santa Barbara Planning Commission meeting to order. Ms. Rodriguez, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Pujol.
Here.
Commissioner Lodge.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Campanella. Absent. Commissioner Bartlet.
Here.
Vice Chair Thompson. Chair Schwartz.
Here. Thank you. Going to go to preliminary matters now. Ms. Brooke, any requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of ex-agenda items?
No, Madam Chair.
Any announcements or appeals?
I do have one announcement I'd like to make. The city staff received a notice of availability and public hearing on the draft environmental impact report for the Galita Valley Community Plan update. And I wanted to make the PC aware of this, as well as anyone else who might be interested. City staff will be reviewing the draft DIR and providing comments if we have any. We have been involved from off and on throughout the development of the draft plan. Just to let people know, the Galita Valley Community Plan is for the eastern Galita Valley and the county, and we'll also update applicable portions of the county code, Chapter 35, which is the zoning code. And this covers the area east of, sorry. The eastern Galita Valley Plan update is in the area located between the city of Santa Barbara to the east and the city of Galita to the west. So it's that unincorporated portion between the city and Galita.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any comments, slips from members of the public pertaining to items not on our agenda today?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. We'll move to our first item. It's a new item. It's the application of Clark King, Agent for the National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration at 1605 Cecil Cook Place. We have Mr. Vermont here from Airport Staff. And does the commission have any interest in Mr. Vermont not proceeding with the verbal and going straight to questions and/or comments?
Any motion? I'll move to waive the staff report.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. All those in favor of waiving the staff report on this item? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Looks like unanimous. Yes. No opposition? Okay. Very good. So we're going to move straight to the item. Questions and/or we'll just go questions and/or comments at the commission's pleasure for Mr. Vermont. Mr. Jordan?
We can't invite him here and not have a question. So Sandra, just the one on that noise issue, the chirping sound you talked about the other day, and I think there's a line in the staff report that says, right now, they're not really sure if there would be an impact, but if there was an impact, they would take some type of steps in the future to remedy that. What would be our recourse to actually have that remedy, just in the off chance that some strange quirk of the wind out there keeps blowing that chirp over to somebody and annoys them?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Jordan, NOAA would be a tenant of the city of Santa Barbara, so it could be a request from the city as landlord to comply with a good neighbor policy.
And would you see something like just maybe additional landscaping on the northern side kind of thing? That would be, I mean, easy remedies like that?
I think it would be adjusting the volume or phasing it for time of day. That's something that we would pursue in that event. But they submitted a noise study which demonstrates that it wouldn't create a new noise impact under the Calvary Environmental Quality Act. But it may be a nuisance to nearby businesses.
As far as a nuisance can be when you have jets taking off over your head, right? So, okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions for Mr. Vermont? Ms. Pujol.
Thank you. I believe on our site visit that we looked at one oak tree that is going to be preserved. If you could just comment on that. And also, I understand it will need to go back for a final design review. And one comment slash question I have is, given that we do try to match what we can in terms of quality of development where it fits on these projects, and certainly, this isn't our typical kind of project, but I do find it a little bit of a concern of mine that there's no landscaping whatsoever being proposed for the site. Maybe you can speak to that, because it seems like at least some minimal planting somewhere would be in order around the edges of the lot or whatever you felt best. I'm not really necessarily concerned that it's a particular kind of landscaping, but just that there be a landscape component to what you do.
Commissioner Pujol, the radar facility needs to have certain sightlines in order for it to be able to get the data that it needs. And so that limits the amount of area adjacent to it that would be really suitable for landscaping. Additionally, that particular site is very near the airfield operations area security fence, which is supposed to be designed to be free of landscaping so that law enforcement can see what's movement on either side of it for security reasons. And given the, given those constraints and the discussion at ABR really did not get into landscaping at all, we did not see that as something that we needed to require of the project.
Ms. Pujol, please continue.
Doing questions or questions and comments?
That's fine. But I don't want to be remiss in asking for public comment. Ms. Brooke, do we have any speaker slips on this item?
No, Madam Chair, we don't.
Okay. Let's continue then. Ms. Pujol, please.
Questions and comments together?
Sure.
Okay. All right. So my only comment on the project overall is that I would like the ABR to review with you any opportunities for at least a little bit of landscaping onsite when it goes back to them, at least to consider that and discuss that at ABR.
Thank you. Mr. Bartlet?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Going back to the question that Commissioner Jordan asked on noise, question for staff, doesn't the noise ordinance already establish the decibel threshold at the property lines for emitting noise to adjacent properties? And I believe that it was recently raised to, what, 65 decibels? Do we have a condition in the conditions of approval that this needs to be tested to prove that it's within conformance?
Commissioner Bartlet, we do not have that condition. We had a report prepared by NOAA that demonstrated the decibel level off-site would be well below 65. However, it's certainly something that we could add as a condition.
Yeah. It looked like the report was talking about radial distances from the proposed facility, but our site plan didn't even extend far enough to show where the property lines were. So it's kind of hard to relate those distances to the exhibits that we've been given.
Madam Chair, also, just for clarity, the 65 decibel limit is for noises adjacent to residentially zoned or used properties as well. So in an industrial area, I believe it's higher than that. I don't know off the top of my head what it is, but 65 is usually what's used for uses adjacent to residential.
Right. But isn't the property across the street city-owned and commercial? Which allows residential by pyramid zoning?
Zoned or used.
Because we've seen it in other projects, even though it's zoned commercial, if there's the ability to do residential, i.e. mixed use on a commercial lot, then it applies.
We haven't applied it that way at the staff level.
You have in the past.
Okay. If you want to add that as a condition, I suppose you could.
Mr. Vermont, did you want to add to that?
Well, I would add that the aviation facilities zone, which is where this project is and the adjacent areas all preclude residential uses. So we couldn't have a mixed use in the AF zone.
Okay. Any further discussion about the noise thresholds? Ms. Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm inclined to agree with Commissioner Pujol about the landscaping. The one attractive, well, the oak tree's being preserved, but then there's this very large and attractive oleander bush which is going. So it's going to be even less attractive than it is. But I somehow have a sense that this is not a very, I was looking for it, this is not a long-term lease. This in a way is not a permanent installation, or am I misremembering?
Commissioner Lodge, I would say that short-term and long-term are relative. I mean, especially at the airport, there are a lot of things that were put in on five-year leases that have been around for decades. So I'm not sure how to answer that exactly. It's supposed to be a short-term lease, but we'll have the option to renew.
Okay. Thank you. Well, then, I really would like to see, I understand that you can't have big shrubbery that's in the sightlines, but it seems to me they probably could do some other things that would not interfere with the operation of the facility.
Mr. Vermont, do you have another different angled site photograph slide to show us? Or is this the one?
Well, I have an aerial and I have that site photograph.
Okay. All right. I was just hoping in the course of this discussion about landscaping that perhaps another angle would be helpful. All right. Any other comments? No? Is there a motion to, anyone want to make a motion? Mr. Thompson?
Move to approve the project and the coastal development permit, making the findings in the staff report subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion, given what I heard from Commissioners Pujol and Lodge about direction or request for additional appropriate landscaping? Ms. Lodge?
Commissioner Thompson, would you be willing to add consideration of adding landscaping?
Well, here's the problem. We don't know if landscaping is compatible with the radar site. So they've got, the staff's got the direction when it goes back to ABR for architectural approval to investigate that. And I think that's enough.
Okay.
Personally.
Ms. Pujol, further discussion on the motion?
Yes. And in listening to my fellow commissioners right now, it was a comment that I brought up and then Commissioner Lodge as well. But what I believe is not necessarily that it has to be a condition, because I, like Commissioner Thompson, I don't know where it could go or to the extent that you could do the landscaping, but I would like ABR to look at specifically for that. And I think that item, if possible, I'm looking towards staff right now, could be a separate direction outside of the conditions. Is that an option for us?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Pujol, we could, in a minute, have that reflected as a comment.
That's what I would propose.
Okay. All those in favor, excuse me, I'm losing my voice.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes you down asleep. Excuse me, this project is appealable within 10 calendar days to the city council. Thank you. Excuse me, I hope my voice bears up. Okay. Our next item, moving right along. We'll let staff set up. This is a recommendation to the city council. I'm going to let, yeah, thank you very much. Okay.
This is a recommendation to the city council for municipal code amendments related to the average unit size density incentive program and Historic Landmarks Commission referral to planning commission. And Allison DeBusk, project planner, will be giving the staff presentation.
Thank you. Ms. DeBusk?
Thank you, and good afternoon. The purpose of today's meeting is to provide a recommendation to the city council on an ordinance amendment that identifies parameters for requiring planning commission review of AUD projects. As you know, the AUD is the Average Unit Size Density Incentive Program that was approved by the city council in July 2013. The AUD ordinance implements general plan policies that encourage smaller units at higher densities. In September 2013, the city council expressed a desire to have the planning commission be more involved in the review of the more significant AUD rental projects. And since that time, staff has held several discussions with various boards and commissions to discuss the AUD review process. The planning commission held two hearings to discuss the issue in December 2013. Most recently, the city council discussed it on June 24th of this year. The recommendations that the city council made at the June hearing was that AUD rental projects in the high-density area or using the priority housing overlay and with a project site of 15,000 square feet or more would be required to have planning commission concept review. Staff has prepared an ordinance amendment that incorporates those recommended parameters for triggering planning commission review, and we're looking for your feedback on that ordinance amendment. And as some background, the rationale for choosing 15,000 square feet as the project site trigger was twofold. First, a lot size was chosen as the trigger rather than the number of units in the development. And the reason for that is because if the number of units were used as the trigger, then applicants may choose to reduce the number of units in their projects simply to avoid hitting the trigger and therefore having an additional layer of review. And that would be counter to the intent of the ordinance, which is to encourage higher densities. The second reason is because staff did some research on the number of lots or the lot sizes within the high-density and priority housing overlay, and approximately 50% of those lots are 15,000 square feet or greater. So we think that this trigger won't bring too many or too few projects to the planning commission for review. Additionally, staff thinks that a 15,000-square-foot lot is large enough where planning commission input can be more useful to the design review boards in terms of policy consistency. This slide shows the anticipated review process for projects that hit the 15,000-square-foot project site trigger. And essentially, after the first concept design review board hearing, then the project would go through our PRT process, which is an internal staff review. The project may then choose to go back for a second concept design hearing, although that would be optional. And then the project would come to the planning commission for review, where the planning commission would have a concept hearing and would provide majority comments and recommendations to the applicant. The final step would be going back to the design review board for a decision. Staff is also proposing a cleanup amendment to the HLC ordinance. And the purpose of the cleanup amendment is to allow the HLC to be able to refer any project on a highly visible site to the planning commission. In the way the ordinance is currently written, the HLC can only refer residential projects to the planning commission. So changing this language would give the HLC the same authority that the ABR currently has. Also, in the staff report, we had said that we would briefly discuss the context of the AUD in the coastal zone at today's hearing. And as the commission is aware, we held an informal discussion of that item at the planning commission's lunch meeting last week. So while staff is available to answer any questions that you may have or that the public may have on that issue, we would like to keep the focus of today's discussion on the AUD review process. And finally, I do want to note that we've received two public comment letters on this item. One from Jamie Bishop, expressing opposition to increasing density in the city, and one from Shella Coman-Dumonge, Executive Director for Chance, regarding how the AUD ordinance affects community members with disability and their housing opportunities. So that letter is not germane to today's discussion, but we have forwarded it on to planning staff as part of their update of the housing element for consideration. So in conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission review the proposed ordinance amendments and forward recommendations on those amendments to the city council. And that concludes my staff presentation, and we can answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. DeBusk. Any speaker slips from members of the public on this item?
No, Madam Chair, I do not have any.
Okay. Very good. So it's back to the commission for questions of staff? Anyone want to go first? Ms. Pujol?
Thanks. Just a couple of questions. I think maybe, yes, two questions. All right. So in the first page of the ordinance is what I'm referring to, page 1 of 6 of Exhibit A, and in your staff report as well, but this is where you're adding the provision for Historic Landmarks Commission to refer a project that's highly visible to the public. So I guess the question I have there is, how do you define highly visible?
Commissioner Pujol, that is not defined in the ordinance, and so it would be at the discretion of the HLC. If they feel that something is highly visible, then they can forward it to the planning commission. We did not propose to change that language just to keep the ordinance amendment simple, although I think that is different than what's in the ABR language. But that's why we aren't proposing to change it.
But it's something they're accustomed to grappling with, is how to determine when something is highly visible versus visible or medium-highly visible?
Yes. And most of the projects that the HLC works on are highly visible because they're within the downtown area typically. But that would be something that would be at their discretion.
Okay. And then I had one other, well, actually, I could save the other one to the comment section. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Pujol. Other questions for staff? Mr. Bartlet?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To follow along with Commissioner Pujol's question, isn't AUD by definition residential? Why do we need to strike that word?
Commissioner Bartlet, that is correct. For AUD, we don't need to strike that word. It was just something that we noticed when we were looking at the HLC's ability to refer projects to planning commission, and we noticed that there is this discrepancy between what the ABR has authority to recommend to PC and what the HLC has authority. So it doesn't affect AUD projects, but it would affect your typical commercial project. So it's just cleaning up that language.
So it really has no bearing on what we're doing for AUD? It's just a cleanup item that you've added to the list?
Correct.
Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Allison, on the flow chart that you have at the back there, would it be difficult at some point in that flow chart, whether that's prior to the first conceptual meeting or the second conceptual meeting, to notify the entire planning commission that a project has met this trigger and there's a pending design board hearing so that if you're so inclined, you could actually watch that or be prepped to watch that before you just have your Thursday-to-thursday notice that a project's coming?
Commissioner Jordan, I think that is something that would be possible, especially with the second conceptual design review hearing. The first conceptual design review hearing might be a little more difficult in terms of the timing, but it's something we can keep in mind.
You would suggest before the notification prior to the second one, you know, the Thursday before, the next week's second conceptual meeting? Yeah, I'd suggest that. It would certainly benefit me, having that heads-up to either have an opportunity to watch it on TV or just later during that week before you get to the next, whenever it's coming, and while it's fresh to get the comments. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. DeBusk, I have one question. Under the planning commission review, a portion of the sequencing, I went back to the packet that we received on March 4th that was given to the council. One of the documents was called Attachment 6. It's AUD project consistency criteria. Let me just read you the categories, because my question is whether or not these criteria would then be the basis for planning commission review and majority recommendations back to the review board. So we have general plan consistency, regulatory ordinances, and of course, there are many details underneath that. I can hand this to you. Do you know what I'm referring to? The purpose of this criteria list is to assist the ABR, HLC, and/or planning commission in reviewing an AUD project for consistency with the general plan, AUD program, ordinance intent, and project compatibility criteria. So in forwarding our recommendation today to council, I'm wondering if we are suggesting that this be adopted as the list from which we would evaluate projects that come to us and then move on or move back to review board?
Commissioner Schwartz, I don't have that list particularly in front of me, but...
Can I hand it to Ms. Rodriguez to show you?
Sure.
If you want to put it up on the screen just to, because I would like to know what our, you know, what our criteria parameters would look like in not voting but actually just making a consensus recommendation or directional recommendation, which is what we've been talking about for, in our various hearings on this item. Yeah. There we go. Can you maybe enhance it a little bit? So all I'm looking for is, you know, for you to confirm that this is the list that is going to go back to council based on our recommendation today, and our understanding is that this will be the review criteria.
Commissioner Schwartz, yes. This would be the... Commissioner Schwartz, yes, this would be the criteria that the Planning Commission would be using, as well as what the design review boards use when the project does not trigger Planning Commission review.
Okay, and certainly, if an applicant wanted to refer their project up to us, the same would apply, right?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So, Mr. Jordan?
Thank you. So I'm confused on that, because just to play devil's advocate here, so everybody's fair on the other side, my understanding of that list is that is a list that would be utilized in the normal process of AUD review, whether one needed to come to the Planning Commission because it needed some other discretionary trigger, or it just stayed at the design review boards. But we're going through this process right now because there are concerns or issues that are outside of what's been adopted that council has asked for those to be reviewed by the Planning Commission, such as parking or traffic issues, such as not-on-a-piece-of-paper type of design, but how it fits or lives within the greater scheme of the community and livability and uses and complementary trade-offs back and forth. And those aren't on that list, those type of things. And I could probably... You've caught me a little unawares, because I could probably think of other things, but I wasn't really ready to think of other things, too. But that's why I thought seven other people were going to make some comments on an opinion on the project. Is that inaccurate?
Commissioner Jordan, you're correct that part of the reason that City Council wants the Planning Commission to be involved is because some members do have concerns with aspects of the AUD ordinance. However, I think the intent is more to have this commission, who has more experience in terms of the land use aspect of it, to be able to provide comments back to the design review boards for things such as circulation and general site planning versus just the appearance of the building. Those are things that the design review boards can discuss as well, and it's part of their review, but I think the purpose is to have a commission that has more experience dealing with those things to comment on it.
But, for example, what you just mentioned is not on that list.
Not specifically, but it's part of the general plan policies.
So I guess that's my rub, is having a list put up there and saying, this is what we're agreeing that we're going to talk about, is not necessarily what we're going to talk about. Really, the door is open to talk about scope and frames of reference that planning commissioners bring to this type of review that aren't necessarily part of that list that is solely developed for what is the AUD process.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, the list that is up on the screen is representative of topics that are commonly discussed when the Planning Commission and design review bodies look at projects. It is not intended to be an exclusive list of the topics, and Commissioner Jordan's description that there may be other topics discussed and that the City Council intended the Planning Commission to consider other topics is correct. The City Council did not give staff any direction as to a narrow, limited scope or broad scope of the topics. I think the City Council's expectation is that the context of proposed AUD projects, rental projects in particular, and the design of that, of any particular rental project, would direct or create the topics for discussion, and I don't think that the City Council was wanting to foreclose any particular discussion.
Okay. As long as we kind of have that balance with the list and that type of understanding, I agree.
Yeah, and Mr. Jordan, I appreciate your follow-on clarifying questions, because that's exactly why, Ms. Debask, I was inquiring about this list. And since we're not, we won't be voting on those projects but providing directional consensus, the categories of consensus, and we've been discussing this for some months now, are going to be very important for us to agree on in order...
And just, you know, as a case in point, I'm supportive of what you're talking about here today, but I know at least one council member that's supportive of what you're talking about here, that's supportive of the general plan and the AUD process, but is also fiercely in the opinion that these type of projects should come before Planning Commission, not necessarily to address AUD issues, but issues that are of a wider type of concern that happen to fall into the AUD process. So I don't... It's not, I'm not being unsupportive. It's more that I just want to make sure that that type of awareness is going through this process.
So with that, any other, any comments? Ms. Pujo?
Actually, I did have one follow-up question I should have asked earlier, and then I could give my comments. I just have a couple of comments. But my follow-up question is, more than anything, because this is a good opportunity to ask it and check in. Back in December, we had a healthy discussion about the costs of the process, particularly for projects that would need to have some additional staff support at the review boards, and then if it comes to the commission. And I, for one, and I believe others, expressed a desire to see where we could economize on those costs where possible. And it's not in front of us today, but I just thought I would ask what the status of that is. In the staff report for the December 12 hearing, for example, there was a section devoted to potential fees that would be required. And so I just don't want that to slip through the cracks, and thought it would be a good opportunity today to just bring it up and see if that's still on the table for some discussion as we move forward with a new process.
Commissioner Pujo, we haven't discussed that any further in terms of moving forward. The intent would be that the current charges are what would be applied to those AUD projects, so I don't have any additional information for you on that one at this point.
We've got the budget adopted for this year, but, you know, it's an eight-year program, so hopefully, when we review this for the next budget cycle, I would like to ask that some discussion of that be included.
Commissioner Pujo, I'm sorry, I'm just asking Ms. Debask to check one thing. If that report was written in December, we may have since then added a lower-level concept review fee to our fee resolution. I'm just having her check what we quoted...
Okay, thank you.
At that point, because we did have a concept review fee. No, I apologize. It's the pre-application review fee I'm thinking of, which, if the project's triggered concept review, we would require PRT. That's where we added in a lower-level pre-application review fee for those that were considered optional, so I think we'd have to consider whether...
Yeah, any small adjustments would, I think, help, because after all, you know, we don't want the fees to get prohibitive for these projects. So in terms of my comments, I have just a couple. First of all, thank you for the staff report and the summary of the board and the... I mean, the council and the ordinance committee proceedings. I will be supporting the ordinance, except for a couple little comments on wording that I have. It's, I had hoped that the threshold would be higher than 15,000 square feet, capturing 50% seems a little bit high of a ratio to me. I would have preferred more like, you know, a quarter of the projects or so be captured by the Planning Commission. But nonetheless, it looks like a lot of discussion and compromise on all sides helped put together this package, and I think the overriding need right now is to get something on the books and start this process. So we don't have projects and applicants and staff and review boards all up in the air about how the procedures work, so I will be supporting those basic concepts that are reflected in the ordinance. I do have, let's see, a comment, both, two commas, both on page 1 of 6 of the ordinance, some wording changes that I feel would at least make it more clear to what I believe the intent is. And they both happen to be under the Planning Commission comments regarding historic landmark provisions. Right now, it says highly visible, and I accept the fact that that will need to be left to the judgment of the HLC, but it says highly visible to the public. To me, the test isn't simply the public at its most basic level, which could be any neighbor, singular neighbor. I think it needs to be highly visible to the general public, so the test is a little bit stronger, that we're not talking about any house that's not invisible then becomes highly visible. And I think that would at least aid in that judgment. And then the second one is on the same line. The Landmarks Commission may, prior to granting preliminary approval... Later on, on page 5, you use wording that I think is more clear, because later on on page 5, under timing of the review, you say, "Planning Commission review pursuant to this section shall occur after the initial concept review by ABR or Landmarks." I like that wording better, because one of the key topics and points that we were discussing in our prior meetings was that we wanted at least one concept review. And this first paragraph, I'm not sure if you ever get to skip concept review and just go to preliminary, but I want to make it as clear as possible that in these cases, you actually have to have a concept review first. That would be my other comment.
Commissioner Pujo, to respond to your second comment, the text on page 1 is for all projects going to HLC, not AUD projects. So it could be a commercial project that would be going in for project design approval as its initial hearing, and so that's why the language is the way it is, before they grant that first approval, that they can refer it to the Planning Commission. So that's why the language is different in those two sections.
So is it clear in the staff and city attorneys' view that the language later on page 5 would override that or put in additional criteria for just the AUD projects, because that one says after the initial concept review, or the other one just says prior to preliminary review? I just want to make sure that we actually get one concept review before it comes to us.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, the design review hearing, the first design review hearing by any design review body is by nature at least a concept review. It is in relatively rare situations where a project actually moves to project design approval at its first hearing, and given the responses to the projects that we've seen of this scale already, I think it's almost impossible that a project of over 15,000 square feet under the AUD program would move from concept review to project design approval in a single hearing. And in fact, the new ordinance would prevent that, because there would be one concept review, the first hearing at the design review body, then it would have to come to the Planning Commission. So there would not be, you would not be going to project design approval at the first hearing.
I think the latter part of that statement is what I was looking for, is you said that the provisions under the AUD would prevent a project from coming to the Planning Commission without a concept review.
The proposed ordinance...
That's what I wanted to guarantee. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I do want to speak to the comments regarding Section 2222-133. This is an existing section of the municipal code. It was staff's intention to simply address this distinction or discrepancy between the review authority or the ability for the Architectural Board to review to send projects to the Planning Commission, and the fact that it's, the ABR's authority was not coextensive with the HLC. There are some, now looking at the paragraph, there are some other opportunities to modernize this section. The design review step is no longer preliminary approval. It is project design approval, and we can make that change as it goes forward. Regarding the concern of the public or general public, design review is applicable to projects that are viewable, are able to be viewed from public viewing locations. Design review does not apply to interior remodels. And so we're talking, when the reference to the public, it is a reference to projects that are viewable by the general public from a public location. We can add the word general, but in general, we... As a matter of course, we don't normally do that.
I understand, and I would appreciate it and like to take you up on your offer to add the word general, because I do think it clarifies it.
So for carrying on with comments, I'm in full support of where you're going with this. I think you guys have gone up the ladder and have come back down the ladder and negotiated, and I'm cautiously optimistic that what you see, what we see in front of you is going to be supported to the level that you need it to be supported when you get back to council. I think it's a good compromise. I am not too taken back by the 50%, 50% split, or 46% of opportunity sites, whatever it is, because I think those truly, for at least this stage of this process in the general plan, represent a concern in the community. At the end of the general plan and the implementation of the implementing ordinances, I can say there were probably a lot of people in this town that were just agreeable by exhaustion. And so, and may not have realized fully exactly what they were talking about or what it would look like when the things started getting built. And so there's understandably been some concern, and I think this doesn't overly impede in the direction or the intent of the general plan or the AUD program. For projects that are this size, on a, you know, a third of an acre plus, a third of an acre plus, I think they're capable of coming to the Planning Commission, both in time and money, and certainly would see some benefit from that in terms of having a more supportable project emotionally when they go back to the rest of the process down at the Design Board. So I congratulate you on getting this far. If you need bodies to stand up when this goes back to council, you can certainly ask me. I'd be happy to. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, you know, when this first came to us as a possible change to the original AUD program, there were quite a few on the Planning Commission, maybe the majority, I'm not recalling exactly, that felt that we should continue with the way the AUD program was originally established, and that was to make it much more streamlined as part of the incentive for property owners to take advantage of the AUD process. It's unfortunate that perhaps the first couple of projects that came forward under the AUD program had quite a bit of controversy that ended up elevating through appeal to the City Council, and they didn't like that. So they said, we got to do something to get this through the Planning Commission before we have to keep dealing with all these things on appeal. So we've had all this hashed out, and quite a few of us thought that the Design Boards, given the same level of staff support that we get at the Planning Commission, could make these determinations, but the City Council has decreed what it's going to be. So we really are only looking at the wording in the ordinance to establish what the City Council and the Ordinance Committee has already decreed it's going to be. So we really don't have much to talk about here, other than, did you capture the words that the council wanted to see? And I think you have, and so I have no choice but to go forward and support the proposed ordinance and forward it on to the City Council, because that's what they're expecting.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Other comments before I make my own? Mr. Bartlet, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I think Commissioner Thompson hit the nail on the head. I think we're just orchestrating what City Council is wanting to see. I know in all of our discussions, I don't think the size of the lot was the issue area that is causing the problem. I think it's all the other issues that are beyond the control of design review, you know, traffic, circulation, environmental issues, all the others. So I think the wrong trigger is being imposed, and I think it's taking away the incentive... So I think the wrong trigger is being imposed, and I think it's taking away the incentive, which is part of the title of this ordinance. But if this is the desire of council, then I guess we will endorse it and send it back for adoption. But also on your flow chart, the way you had it set up, I mean, Planning Commission is literally the last stop before project design approval. I mean, Planning Commission, we're involved with land use. That should be the first issue that needs to get resolved before you design a project. And by inserting Planning Commission at the end of the line, it's almost too late unless the applicant is wanting to start over and then do another conceptual design and then come back before getting project design approval. So I think it's also out of sequence and an additional step and cost to the applicant. If it's going to happen, it'd be better for the applicant to choose to go to Planning Commission voluntarily and do it upfront so they can get the input when they need it when they're designing, rather than after they've gone through two rounds of design and a lot of expense already. So those would be my comments. I will support it just to get it back to council for adoption. But, you know, given the timing of this, I don't think we're going to be seeing any projects before us until probably next year, you know, because this won't take effect till October, and then it's going to take two or three months to get through all those steps before it would come to us. So unfortunately, I'll never see one while I'm on the commission, but others will.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett. Other comments before I make my own? No? Okay. So I'm going to use Mr. Bartlett's concluding comments as a jumping off point. I, too, feel that the sequence isn't right to actually accomplish the efficiency and cost effectiveness for applicants. But I'm going to let this go because on a 5-2 vote, the council has spoken, and we've spent upwards of, you know, 10, 11 months with various meetings, and staff has been patient. I think it did need the vetting that it's had, both at the Planning Commission and the council. And I think the appeal by Marge Cafarelli that really opened the council's eyes to the complexities and maybe unintended impacts of some of these projects brought it to the council for fresh perspective. However, having said that, if this is the final sequence, I'm just going to accept it, but I don't see it supporting part of the intention of the ordinance. So I'm not sure if the council really understood what happens with a project and to an applicant when the Planning Commission review, even a majority consensus directional review comes this late in the process. But I'm just going to turn it back over to staff and our Assistant City Attorney to decide whether or not that's worthy of additional discussion with the council, or you're just going to proceed as follows. But at this point, given how long it's taken us to get where we are, I'm not going to stand in the way end. And again, on a 5-2, the council has spoken. So those are my thoughts.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I appreciate your comments on the flow chart, and I do just want to point out that that second conceptual design review, I think the reason that Planning Commission review appears so late in the flow chart, relatively speaking to all the other steps, is that we do include an optional second conceptual design review, which would be optional almost entirely up to the applicant. I can't see staff necessarily demanding that or Planning Commission asking for that. But otherwise, we do want to make sure that staff understands the project well enough and is able to take not only our review of the project and the first conceptual review of the design review board to the Planning Commission in order to have a fruitful discussion and analysis of the project, that we did want those two things to occur. So it could be that that second conceptual design review does not occur before Planning Commission would see this project.
Okay. Mr. Thompson?
Just an observation. Many projects have more than one or two conceptual reviews. I've seen quite a few projects that are up there for a fourth concept review, fifth concept review. They're still trying to get their project, their arms around what the design board is looking for and what they want. And so it's not really constrained to only one or two concept reviews.
Ms. Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an experimental program, limited by the number of units or number of years. And I think part of the success of it, at that time, the council would be looking at and saying, you know, "Did this provide the kind of housing that we wanted? Is it that the city needs? And do the projects fit within the community?" And I think that's where the Planning Commission comes in, is assuring that these projects do fit within the community and that they are appropriate. And so I think it's important to the success of the program that there be Planning Commission review for the larger projects. Thank you.
So with that, staff is looking for a recommendation to council, and I don't know if you're looking for a motion on that recommendation or if you... Yes, is that required?
Yes, Madam Chair. We would like a motion so we can have a resolution.
Okay, very good. So unless, Ms. Pujol, you have your light on, would you like to--
Oh, I'm ready for a motion.
Okay.
That the Planning Commission make the recommendation to the City Council for the adoption of the Average Unit Size Density Incentive Program Ordinance Amendment. And did you also say we needed to mention resolution in there or by resolution? No? Okay. So leave it at that with one change to page, well, with the change to page one of six of the ordinance to include the two changes under Section 22.22.133A, as summarized by the city attorney.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Lodge seconded. Any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes unanimously? Mr. Vincent, do I need to announce an appeal on this type of recommendation? No, it's not a project. Okay, thank you very much. We're finished with this item, and we'll just take a moment to let staff set up for the next item, which is a new item, application of Capital Pacific Development Group for the Mattson Family Trust, 3626 San Remo Drive. Mr. Gullett, will you be making a staff presentation for us today?
I will, Madam Chair, and I'm ready when you are.
Okay. And then followed by an applicant presentation? Yes, what would you say, 15, 20 minutes?
I hope we can do it in less than that.
Okay, well, that would be great. Thank you. But don't rush. Yes, Mr. Gullett, please.
Good afternoon, planning commissioners. This project is for map provision and condition amendment for the subdivision originally approved by the Planning Commission on October 14, 2010. That subdivision included preservation of a historically significant facade on an existing residence, provision of a view corridor from the public right-of-way to that facade, creek restoration, and development restrictions for the subdivision. This is an aerial of the vicinity. The subject property is bordered in white. It's approximately one and a half acres and is bounded on the east by San Roque Creek. The request from the applicant today is to revise the approved tentative subdivision map and amend one particular condition, Condition B2, which addresses the demolition of the main residence. The requested revisions to the map include adjustment of development envelopes, removal of four additional oak trees, planning of replacement oak trees at three to one, which would result in 12 additional oaks, changes to the grading quantities, removal of a pedestrian path along the creek that would serve just the proposed residences, minor shifts in property lines, and adjustment in the sidewalk curvature and the resultant dedication to the city for San Remo Drive. The main result from the proposed changes is a change to the development envelope on parcel four. Parcel four is constrained by the creek setback, the view corridor, front setback, and driveway. This proposed change results in the four additional oak tree removals. And I want to walk the commission just briefly through how we got to where we're at with the development envelopes. The Planning Commission reviewed this project twice in 2010. The first time was September 2nd. And I'll focus first on the development envelope on Lot 4, and then I'll go briefly through what happened with the view corridor and what happened with the creek setback. So originally, the applicant, and it was a different applicant at the time, the applicant team has essentially changed out. The new applicant, Capital Pacific, is in escrow to purchase the property. The original proposal for parcel four was to remove the subject trees. And this shows the development envelope, the creek setback at that time was proposed at 35 feet for all four lots. The Planning Commission provided comments, continued the item, and the applicant came back with a reconfigured parcel four. So that reconfiguration retained those four oaks and removed these two other oaks. The applicant at that time, too, was proposing an increased creek setback to 40 feet. Planning Commission ultimately approved the development envelope at 45. And this is what's currently on the tentative map. It does show the 45-foot setback from top of bank of Mission Creek. There's an overlap here. This rectangle is the view corridor easement, at least part of it. There is an overlap with the development envelope and the view corridor easement, and I'll cover that in a bit. So the resulting oak tree removals, staff doesn't normally support removal of mature oak trees in this particular case because of the attic constraints onto Lot 4 and the reasons for it, for additional creek restoration area, for additional public view of the historic building. And to provide more flexibility in design, to be sensitive to the historic structure on the adjacent lot, staff is supporting the removal of these oak trees for reconfiguration. They would be, again, replaced at three to one on the property. And the changes to the map include removal of that pedestrian pathway and different stormwater management strategy, which results in additional area in the conservation easement where replacement oaks could be planted. So the existing residents on Lot 3, portions of that were found to be eligible for structure of barret. Subsequent to the Planning Commission decision in 2010, Historic Landmarks Commission added the structure to the city potential list. So any exterior changes to that building are under the purview of Historic Landmarks Commission. The project is now proposing to reconstruct those eligible elements of the existing building, including the south facade, the curved staircase on the west side of the south facade, and the east elevation and entrance, and still providing that view corridor. Regarding Condition B2, the Planning Commission and its approval require that the conservation easement be expanded if the building is not restored. There wasn't consideration that it could be reconstructed, but there was concern, seeing its condition in 2010, that it may not be possible to restore it. This applicant hired a structural engineer who concluded that the facades were structurally unsound and couldn't be restored. There was a historic structures and sites report addendum that concluded that the change to the project was consistent with the Secretary of Interior Standards for reconstruction. And that report was accepted by Historic Landmarks Commission. Unto the view easement, this is the view of the existing house from San Remo. And backing up in time, this is what was originally proposed by the applicant, consistent with what the historic structures report was calling for at the time. This is what the applicant proposed when the applicant returned the project to the commission, and this is what the commission ultimately approved. So this includes that additional five feet of creek setback going to the 45, and that's in Condition C1, that adds that extra triangle. And under Condition B7, there are limitations of what can happen in the view corridor, restricting what heights of vegetation that can be planted. I know the applicant would prefer to have this area be more flexible with vegetation to provide for screening for the future residents on parcel four. And to the creek setback, this is what was proposed by the previous applicant, the 35 feet for all lots. This is what the applicant came back with at the second hearing. And then this is what the Planning Commission approved. So it is a 45-foot setback for parcels one, two, and four. And then parcel three in Condition C1 includes language that restricts encroaching beyond essentially what the existing footprint is on that parcel. And beyond what is in the staff report, staff's recommending a change to that Condition C1. I'll go over that. To illustrate with what's being proposed by the subdivision map before you, the gold shows the development envelopes, and this is the house currently under review by Historic Landmarks Commission. And then this would be consistent with what was approved by Planning Commission. And I do want to suggest clarification on this piece, the entry. And we can look at the language of C1 when we do that. So getting into the weeds on the conditions a little bit, particularly C1, staff inadvertently was recommending strike-through of all of C1 subsection A. So Condition C1 outlines what the approved development is--
That's on page four, Mr. Gullett?
It's on page four of Exhibit A of the staff report.
Okay, just for everybody to reference that.
Thank you. So C1 describes the approved development, and then the subsections of C1 have changes to the approved development. So C1A required those development envelopes to increase to 45 feet with a wider creek setback. So that's been done. That doesn't need to carry forward. It's reflected on the map. What's not is the second clause, which speaks to the development envelope being restricted to the existing footprint of the building and patio for that portion within 45 feet. So just to continue through what was approved and where we're at, under subsection B, conservation easement to be expanded, it was expanded to the reconfigured development envelopes. And the second sentence of that is duplicative with C9, which talks about development rights restrictions. So that's, staff is recommending that that go. And subsection C is done in the subdivision map. So staff's recommending that these subsections be replaced with what's on the screen. So what's on the screen follows what this red line would be. So conservation easement on parcel three revised to include area between the footprints of the existing building, new exterior entrance stairs and landing for the reconstructed entry, and the eastern property boundary. The issue with these stairs is they aren't historically significant. What's being proposed is different-- What's being proposed is different from what is there. They are subject to review and approval by Historic Landmarks Commission. There is an entry there, so stairs are necessary. So rather than limit to the existing footprint of the existing stairs, is something more architecturally appropriate to replace the existing stairs that are there.
Do you have in any of your slides a photograph of what we're talking about so that we can reference back to that when we come to questions?
I don't with me, but I'll check my file.
Okay. Maybe the applicant does. Okay.
Condition B, this excludes the view corridor except at that patio. So essentially, this is taking subsection A, that last sentence, and separating it into its separate subsection. And condition C is exactly the same as condition D was originally. So from the original, A is split into A and B, and C is what D previously was. So staff's recommended conditions include some other changes to reflect changes to the project, and also an attic condition to require differentiated paving along the driveway to enhance the pedestrian access because of the loss of the pedestrian path along the creek. The Single Family Design Board reviewed the changes to the subdivision map on March 24. SFTB was supportive of the oak removal and replacement, and was recommending larger boxed trees to replace some of the proposed removals. SFTB also asked for a different type of lighting in the driveway, and I think this may address one of the neighbors' concerns about light trespass onto their property. They're asking for a bollard-type lower lighting that wouldn't spill onto other properties. And the Single Family Design Board also expressed some concern about fire access to the property and lack of guest parking. And I believe we'll be joined by someone from the fire department if there's questions about fire access. The applicant has applied for residents on each of the parcels. So applications for parcels one, two, and four to the Single Family Design Board, and parcel three to Historic Landmarks Commission. There have been multiple concept reviews on those houses. And the design boards are expecting those houses to come back for continued concept reviews. Historic Landmarks Commission particularly recommended that the planning commission approved the proposed creek setback for the reconstructed house, consistent with what the historic structures reported addendum. So staff's recommending that the planning commission approve the project with reconfigured development envelopes, subject to revised conditions in exhibit A, with the additional revisions to condition C1 on that previous slide, making findings in section 11 of the staff report. And that concludes my comments, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gullett. We'll go to the applicant team now, and then that will be followed by public comment, if any members of the public wish to speak on this item. So if you could just introduce yourself for the record, tell us who's here today on behalf of the applicant.
I'm Jared Gorin from Vanguard Planning, and I'm representing Capital Pacific Development Group and the property owner. We've got Vince Moore, who's Capital Pacific's operation manager here, and Gavin Moore's also from Capital Pacific. But I'm basically going to be doing our presentation. And my presentation today, as it should be, is focused on the map and changes to the map. We're not going to get into the houses. That's being done through Single Family Design Board and really isn't appropriate for this hearing. So here's my aerial photograph. There's our site, State Street's just to the south, and we're basically real close to the corner of San Remo and Ontario Road. This is the approved track map from October of 2010. So it was four lots. It had building envelopes, roughly those locations, and then a driveway along the western side of the property. And I'd point out that this driveway, there was no guest parking in this project when it was approved by the planning commission. And the fire department also reviewed and approved this driveway and determined it to be safe and have plenty of fire access. So our project, not a whole lot has changed. We have the same four lots. You can see the view easement on there. We didn't pick up this little area here, and we'd like to talk some more about that. But in the meantime, here's our building envelopes, and that's our improvement plan. And you can see our driveway. There's a couple of minor changes to it, which I'll go over later, but it's basically the same driveway location approved before. So we'll go over the revisions to the building envelopes, our oak tree removal and mitigation plan, some time about the historic structure on lot three, when I address our grading and explain that. And then we'll just touch on the other small changes to the project. So building envelopes. That's the 2014 map and its building envelopes. And I'll make them red so you can see them better. This is our map, and these are the changes overlaid directly on each other of all the full building envelopes. And one of the reasons why they're off on the east side is because the map actually hadn't redrawn them yet to the 45 feet that was recommended by your commission. Our envelopes are shown in yellow there, and we've pulled them back, the five feet, with the exception of lot three, where the historic residence is. And then on the west side, we provided just a standard 20-foot setback all the way along. It doesn't really change much, because if you put, this is our proposed driveway, and if you put that on there, you can see that it's basically, the developable area is the same on all of these lots, even a little smaller on lot one. So look at this corner real quick here. This is lot three. And what's going on here is there's an oak tree right there. That's one of two oak trees, which our arborist said were compromised, and the original applicants drew their line around it. They were still required to keep it as part of their plan, and we're moving our line out over it, but we are also keeping that tree as part of our plan. We just, rather than surveying out the curve, and we think that the more important thing is what's going to happen on the ground versus the line right here on this building envelope. So we just squared it up. And then on lot four, as Dan mentioned, that was the biggest change. So what we've got going on here is first, the view corridor got widened. The red is the 2010 map. The yellow is our current one. Then the building envelope had to be set back an additional five feet. So ours reflects that now. The red one didn't do that yet. And it was increased to the 45 feet that we have now. And so this really just leaves this sort of, it's a really awkward area in there to try to build a house and fit a house into. So we're proposing to move it back to give some more flexibility, to be able to put more stuff on the ground floor. Here's a direct comparison of the two. And the difference this is going to make is, in that corner, you can see these oak trees. And we're referring to it as three. Dan referred to it as four. There's this mystery tree, which shows up in the report but which nobody has seen or found on site. So we're just, we don't know if it's clerical. We don't know what happened to that tree, but we're just saying those oak trees would be removed now as a result of changing this building envelope. And that's addressed in our oak mitigation and replacement plan, which I'll go over in more detail right now. So this is our plan. It's done by Robert Adams at EarthKnowers Studios, and I'll blow this up. So those are our four lots. Now, the city doesn't require mitigation for oak trees that are less than four inches in diameter. The approved map from 2010, it included removal of five oak trees that were over four inches in diameter. And then there's these two compromised oaks, which are not proposed to be removed, but they're in bad enough shape that the arborist recommended we mitigate for them in advance. So those are still included as part of the mitigation calculation. And then the revisions we're proposing would result in the removal of three additional oak trees. We say it's three. You'll see in a minute why it doesn't really make a difference. The Single Family Design Board supported that removal for, basically, so that that building envelope could be expanded and give some more flexibility on the ground floor and not be so squeezed and force everything up into the corner right next to that view corridor. So the mitigation requirement is three 15-gallon oaks for one mitigation oak that's removed. So 10 oak trees at a three-to-one ratio is 30 mitigation trees. We actually have 33 included in our plan, so if that mystery fourth tree is a question, it's covered. We have three extra trees in there. And then one of the interesting things of our plan is, for our mitigation trees, nine of them are actually going to be transplants from on our site. They're naturalized to our site. An arborist has looked at them. We've determined that these trees have an excellent chance of survival, so we're going to go with transplants from our site to other locations on the site. And that's where they're going to move out to. And they've also reviewed all the proposed locations for these trees and determined that they all work. So let's look at lot three. Just a quick history on it. It's a 1927 structure by Edwards &amp; Plunkett. The February 2010 Historic Sites and Structures Report determined that the facade of the structure was significant. In October of 2010, your commission approved demolition of the structure but retention of the facade. And then in September 2013, the structural engineer was evaluating retaining the facade and just determined that it's too far gone to retain, as well as the foundation. So we had to revise. The historian had to do an update to the report, and she prepared a letter addendum. And it addressed the demolition and reconstruction of that facade, so replicating it in place, basically. And in February of 2010, the HLC reviewed and accepted that letter addendum. And in April of 2014, our historian also prepared another addendum to address the impacts of homes on these lots with relation to the view corridor. So even though we're not talking about homes today, we were asked to look at that in relationship to this view corridor, and she determined there was no impacts. And the HLC accepted that report as well. So the issue is that the approval resolution for the 2010 map doesn't address reconstruction of the facade. It addresses retention of the facade. And now it's being reconstructed, and the way the condition reads, the conservative read on it is it would have to be reconstructed 10 feet further from the creek. And the issue with that is that if we do that, and we retain all the critical elements of that facade, the staircase, this curved staircase, which is a really unique feature of this house, ends up getting pushed into the driveway. So it just doesn't, it doesn't work to retain the facade and do that. Our architectural historian, Alex Cole, she indicated that the existing location is historically significant, so not just what it looks like, but actually where it is on the site. And the HLC agreed with her about that, and they supported replicating it at the exact same location that it is now, 35-foot from the creek, roughly. So let's talk about grading. When you look at this map back in 2010, the grading information that was provided was approximately 150 cubic yards of total grading. And my understanding is they didn't have a soils report at the time, or we're not 100% sure what that's even based on. Our best guess is that it's based on the grading to build their proposed driveway with like six inches of road base underneath it. So our map has different grading numbers. We're going to have 1,422 cubic yards of cut and 70 cubic yards of fill. And the reason for this is we've got a soils report, and we've tested the site, and the soil out here is incredibly porous, and there's a lot of shrinkage. So number one, when you build our driveway, it's got to be overexcavated, and soil that goes back in there is going to shrink and compact down. And then we're also excavating a large volume underneath it as part of our stormwater retention plan. So there's volume associated with that. And then there's the matter of the houses. Houses weren't part of your map back in 2010, and now we have houses. They have foundations. They have to be overexcavated and recompacted, and this stuff shrinks. So rather than trucking in dirt for weeks, we're getting it from our own site. And what we're doing is lots one, two, and four, the elevations are all going to decrease slightly. These aren't dramatic grading changes in the field. The site's pretty much flat. It's going to still look flat, but we're able to get the dirt we need off of those lots. And then lot three, where the houses, we're actually going to preserve that pad location. So not only the location left to right on the site and front to back, but up and down, we are replicating this facade in place. And that is what HLC and the architectural historian have recommended. So there's some other minor changes here. This is the old map, or the currently approved map. They had a berm sort of along the edge up near the creek to intercept any drainage. They had these splash blocks, which I guess drainage was directed that way, and this would dissipate it a little bit before it flowed down into the creek. And then they had this private pedestrian pathway, so that, this wasn't open to the public, but I guess, I'm not sure why they had included that, but I guess it's to have people have an alternative to the driveway. We're proposing to remove that and just expand the riparian restoration area to the outside edge of where all of that would have occupied. So what we're doing instead is, we have a vegetated swale going in at the fringe of our riparian restoration area. And you're all familiar with those. This is the cross-section of ours, and you can see how it's got the vegetation and the permeable material underneath, and we all know how those work. One thing that's interesting in this case is we have a low-flow diversion device in it. So with low rainfall, we have this, they call it a drywall. I'm familiar with that from septic systems, but this is a drywall which percolates rainwater into the soil. And the same thing that gives us such a major issue with recompaction on this site and shrinkage makes it optimum for repercolating rainwater into the ground. So we have this drywall, and it's down there at the end, and that's a cross-section. I've got to be honest, I don't know how to read that cross-section, but that's what it looks like. We're making some minor changes to the driveway, and they're really minor changes. Up top is the approved driveway. Again, that project and this one both went through DART review, including review by the fire department, who has determined this driveway to be safe and meets all their characteristics. Our driveway down below, it has a slight change in this bend here. It has to do with getting better maneuvering into and out of garages on these lots. And that tree number 10 is one of those two compromised trees. And that's the tree in question. We'll clean it up, but right now it's covered with vines, and it's not doing so great. But this is the difference in the two driveways. The original one would have impacted the root zone by 10%. Ours impacts it a little bit more, double, but it's still insignificant, because the arborists say that basically, if you don't impact more than 25% of a root zone, it's not really going to impact a tree significantly. So we're still under that. And again, this is permeable pavers going in on top of it, too. We have some really minor shifts in the lot lines. I was going to do a graphic, but they're so minor, they don't show up in a graphic, so I'll just mention them. And then we're softening the curvature of the sidewalk out on our front edge. We've got a big redwood tree, and we just made that curve a little bit bigger to give it a little bit more space around it. We've got this nice sandstone, stacked sandstone wall that's going to replace the retaining wall that's up along San Remo, sort of deteriorating right now. And then we've got this really tasteful, I think, entry monument that Robert Adams designed. It's all natural materials and sort of picks up the wall and gives you the addresses of those four lots. So in conclusion, our revised map, it's really, it's a refinement of the previous map. It's not radically changing it. And the reason for the refinements is having more accurate information that we have today versus what they had in 2010. The approved map was categorically exempt from CEQA. Our revised map remains categorically exempt. There's no question that these minor changes are not generating some There's no question that these minor changes are not generating some new significant, or even potentially significant, CEQA impact. So, staff determined this exempt as well. The revised map is also consistent with all applicable city land use and development policies. 47% of our site is preserved or restored habitat. That's similar to the previously approved map. We're retaining that, expanding it a little bit. Slightly larger than what was previously approved. We're replicating the historic residence facade in its existing location. It's an infill development, has minimal impact upon existing city infrastructure. It's going to increase the property tax, long-term. It's the gift that keeps on giving. It's going to contribute inclusionary housing fees to the city. And it's going to resolve some existing encroachment issues we have. There's some city improvements on the property that currently aren't covered by easements, which will get resolved through this, because we're now granting easements for those things. I can go into detail on those if you're interested. So, that concludes my presentation. I would like to talk about this area here when your commission wants to get around to it. We're interested in preserving as much flexibility as we can for screening landscaping to deal with the impacts of a future structure on Lot Four and make sure that it is compatible with everything out there. So, when it comes time, I can address that. Thanks a lot.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think I saw another individual come in, so if there are any members of the public who would like to speak on this item and have not already filled out a green speaker slip, now's the time to do that. Otherwise, we're going to go right into public comment. We have four speakers. The first is Peter Edwards. If you would come forward, you'll have two minutes. And following Mr. Edwards is Bob Westwick. Good afternoon, Mr. Edwards.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Here we are again with this same plan, which is basically four two-story houses built very closely to existing residences. They say there's no impact, but there has to be impact. These are large buildings. They're not little one-story cabins. Anyhow, that's one thing that I think is, has not been seriously looked at. They're big buildings. They're in a row. They're not designed in any way to provide a natural scene for the city. They're making the most they can on a very odd piece of property, which is very narrow, very long, loaded with trees, which from, I have just noticed about the grading plan, there's some 2,000 cubic yards of cut. That's a big cut. It's a lot of cut. The other fact is the driveway, which is 10 feet, serving the four houses, which is running right along the property line, or very close to the property line of the adjacent houses in the adjacent development. The project is too big. It's an odd piece of property with a creek on one side and residences on the other side, and there's not much room to give. And yet, these people are trying to put up four two-story houses. I'm very disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Mr. Westwick will be followed by Molly Steen.
Good afternoon. My name is Bob Westwick, and I'm a neighbor on the north through this project to Lot One. Just some food for thought for all of us here. Back in September of 2010, I believe it was, the Planning Commission at that time recommended that there be no house on Lot Four, the one closest to San Remo, to protect the view corridor, and because of the fact that, as Mr. Edwards so eloquently stated, that it's just, it's just too jammed in there. We keep hearing from the project applicant about the constraints on that lot, as if that's supposed to elicit some sympathy from us all. The constraints are now involving the removal of four additional mature oak trees. And even though the staff report says that's within their level of acceptance, I just question the need for that in light of the fact that Lot Four has not even had a house proposed on it yet that's been acceptable to the SFDB. In fact, they've come back three times. They've presented to the SFDB each time, told to downsize this house, preferably to one story, and they are completely ignoring the request of the SFDB and all of the neighbors that keep coming back to reiterate that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Molly Steen will be our next speaker, to be followed by our last speaker, John Steen. Is John still here?
Good afternoon, Madam Commissioner. I have several issues about this project as well. One thing that I did not hear Mr. Goran discuss in his presentation was shifting some lot lines, four feet to the north for Lot, from Lot Four into Lot Three, and subsequently four, I think, three inches, I might have those switched a little bit, between Lot Three and Lot Two. As Bob Westwick said, throughout this process, the applicant has discussed the constraints on the property. As an owner of the property to the north of Lot One, for the house on that lot, the large house that's proposed, we have asked that the structure, or at least the second story for that, be shifted more to the south to reduce its imposment over our backyard. And we have continually been told that to do that, it would then affect Lot Two, which is already small. With their suggestion that that lot be reduced even by a few inches, that is making their constraints that much more difficult to meet our requests for having a smaller second story on that structure on Lot One. So, I'm concerned about that. I'm also concerned about the lack of guest parking that has yet to be shown for the entire project. And the, forgive me. This, when it was approved back in 2010, Mr. Goran said that there were no parking, there was no guest parking that was being required. I would argue that since that time, in those four years, that San Remo and Adair have been getting more and more congested, and that that is something that should be considered as this process goes forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. John Steen will be our last speaker.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is John Steen. I'm co-owner of the lot just north of, of the house just north of Lot One. I have a couple of issues here. First, dealing with some of the environmental things. As Peter Edwards noted, there's 1,497 cubic feet of cut and fill. That's almost 10 times as much as was originally estimated. And that the setback from the creek of 45, from 45 feet to 35 feet. Both of those things, in my view, might have some environmental impact that ought to be looked at again. The oak trees, I'd just like to quote what the HLC had to say about that. The design considers landmark oaks, oak trees, that are characteristic defining the features and should be protected. Let's see. As far as community benefits, the applicant says that the local neighborhood infrastructure will, with the new project, is simply not true. There are a couple of major impacts there, I believe. First of all, of the four houses there, I did a survey of the 32 houses around this project, and I took the net living area, which is the residence area excluding garages, because that's the only number I could get from the county assessor's office. So, anyway, the net living area of those four houses is about 60% bigger than the average and median of the surrounding 32 houses. Similarly, the FAR, that's about, let me see, it's in the order of about three times more than the average and median of the surrounding houses. As far as local infrastructure goes, there's several things that are going to be impacted by that. First of all, the increased traffic on Ontare Road, San Remo Drive, and Grove Lane. Perhaps you saw a whole bunch of cars over there when your major site visit parked on San Remo. That's going to increase with how much guest parking provided. It's just going to crowd that street, those three streets more. There will be an increase in city water consumption, a lot, both due to those big four houses, four big houses and landscaping irrigation. And then, as has been mentioned before, we're all concerned about the turnaround and access, fire access on that driveway. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment, so we'll bring it back to the commission, and we'll begin with questions for staff and/or the applicant. Anyone want to go first? Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have some questions for staff, just to make sure I'm on board here. The discussion today would be a revision, and if the commission couldn't find for a revision, then the existing approvals from 2010 would remain, correct?
That's correct.
And those approvals would still allow for a perception of four two-story, two-story large houses, no guest parking, removal of trees, as they were approved then, right?
That's right.
And some of those issues, of course, are design board issues, they're not our issues in 2010. We just talked about envelopes. And the issue on the cut and fill and the amount, is that, is that a, is that a common outgrowth of when somebody works through a subdivision map and comes up with a number, and then later on actually starts to put things on the ground and comes up with a different number? Is that just a typical outgrowth of that product?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Jordan, it is. In this case, we have a different project engineer and a developer that's actually looking at constructing houses, where the previous project that the Planning Commission reviewed was dry lots out of division.
Okay. And then, can, so you've got a guest. Can we just get a definitive yes to the driveway and fire access is approved?
A representative from the, could you just come forward and...
Well, we didn't drag you over here just to stand by, so...
Please go ahead and have a seat and, for the microphone, yes. We want to make it worth your while, as somebody said.
Yes. Yes, as is showed on the map, access is adequate.
Okay. Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Pujo.
Thank you. I have questions for staff, and I have a few questions, but the first ones are procedural. So, just to clarify and get on the record, this is the map outlining the lots. The houses and their construction that are to follow go through a separate land use, clearance, and building permit process. And if there was concern about size, bulk, scale of any one of those individual houses as they go through the process, that would be separately appealable, wouldn't it?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Pujo, the, each of the proposed houses would go through our standard design review process, which, which does allow for appeals, appeals of project design and appeals of final details. So, the four individual houses go through that process, and as part of review of the subdivision map, the subdivision goes through that process, too. So, that, that's what began before the 2010 review, and that will continue, and then the four houses are reviewed separately and by the design boards.
Okay. And then, just to reiterate, we are not here to review the actual homes on the lots, but the map itself.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks. That is my first question. Now, to the map itself. I don't know if you have a slide of the actual, there's a, there's a lot of, there's a lot of site diagrams, I know, in your, in your PowerPoint, but the one that's of the actual tentative map or the parcel map, do you have that one? The proposed one.
This is a part of sheet TM1, and I also have TM2. Which, which sheet would you like to refer to?
Yeah, I'm a little confused, actually, on what TM1 is. This is the one that looks, that's the main one that gets filed at the recorder's office as a vicinity map in the upper right-hand corner and the site map.
Right.
Tentative track map.
This is an excerpt of the first sheet.
The first page.
Yeah, the second sheet includes the improvements, including the driveway.
Correct, correct, right. And I believe the one we have, though, doesn't have a colored version of the building envelopes, but does show the building envelopes.
Right. This just shows the parcel four.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that looks good. Okay. So, one thing that I would like clarification on is, there's two things going on here. This map, and you only show a portion of it, but actually, the full page actually has the numbered list of all the legal description and easements and all his notations. Okay, that gets approved and finally recorded at the recorder's office and becomes the map. Then separately, we have a set of conditions. And does that also get recorded separately from the map, or does it just sit as conditions on our approval?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Pujo, there is one step in between the tentative map being approved and it being recorded, and the parcel map actually goes to city council. So, the, any changes that the Planning Commission makes to the map should be reflected in that map that goes to city council and that's ultimately recorded. But the conditions of approval stay. So, we refer to the Planning Commission conditions of approval. There's typically some conditions that require private CCNRs, that that goes a separate, a separate path, but...
Becomes a mixture at that point with the conditions.
Right.
Okay. So, in looking at what actually gets recorded, because what we have is a set of conditions, some of which reference notations on a map that then get recorded. Okay, so, in looking at the map, there's a few areas that I have questions and maybe ultimately some comments about. And I am looking at the proposed easements, and I'd just like to go through a couple of those that are on the actual map, because however they're drawn on the map and whatever they're noted as, becomes the final word on what they are. So, the first one is the view corridor easement. That is actually going to be shown on the map. And that's fine. I think that matches everything that's been discussed. And then, the conservation easement, which I think is note number seven, also is going to actually be on the map. So, where we reference the conditions, it actually is the conditions plus what's drawn on the map. But the actual limitations and diagram of where that conservation easement is shows up on the map itself that gets recorded. That's my understanding. So, when I'm looking at that tentative map, one of the things that I notice, and I could probably, at least on my... probably, at, at least on mine, I'm not sure about that slide, when I'm looking at it, I don't see a continuous line going north to south. I don't know if you have a pointer?
Mm-hmm.
But it seems to me like that note, which is note number seven, variable width, conservation easement in favor of the city of Santa Barbara, I don't understand what happens to it when it gets to those six-foot setbacks between the lots. Do you understand what I mean? Is that it, it seems to like disappear in between each lot. So I don't quite understand how that's drawn, and to me, it seems what the intent is, is to take a solid line parallel to the other setbacks along the creek and make it one line that's called the conservation easement, because it has particular restrictions through the conditions that then also, to me, would kind of disappear between the houses. So I don't know if you want to comment on that, but I'm not quite getting how it jives with the, with the conditions.
Um, Madam Chair, I, I concur with Commissioner Pujo's, um, read of this and concern, and we can think about how, how to resolve that. The intent was a continuous line at 45 feet, expanding to 35 on parcel three, and returning to 45 feet for that conservation easement.
Right, and that's my understanding too. I just don't see it reflected on the, on the tentative map, so that would be one thing that I would comment later and want to be clarified as, as this moves forward to our deliberations.
Ms. Pujo, Mr. Goran is available to respond if you want him to as well? Or if you want to just continue with staff right now?
I think I'll just continue right now.
Whatever your preference is.
That, that answered my question for now, and maybe when we get to that point, I, anyway, maybe it's a cleanup item, I'm not sure. Okay, then another question I have is those, is on the overlap between the view corridor and the proposed development envelope on parcel four. And there's a triangle where they intersect, and that's on parcel four, that's not the one with the structure of merit, this is just the vacant portion that will be built on. So my, just to clarify, what I believe is happening here is where those lines intersect, you are protecting the view, but also it's within the development envelope, and I did find in the conditions where landscaping and also structures are limited to a 42-inch height, um, in that view corridor area. So is this the correct interpretation for the area where it intersects? Then there could be some structural development on lot four, but it would have to be like a low 42-inch wall or deck or some such thing as that that wouldn't exceed that height? Is that the intent?
Um, Madam Chair, Commissioner Pujo, um, so this is part of the revision to condition C1 that staff's recommending, but it's actually a carryforward from what was originally approved. So what was originally approved was that the development envelopes exclude the view corridor. So it's not ex, so the development envelope is reconfigured to, to lose this triangle, essentially.
The, which develop, the current one? Because the sheet one, that's the one we're looking at today, April 2014, still shows that overlap?
Uh, that, that's correct. And the staff is recommending that the planning commission carryforward the conditions that were originally...
Ah, okay, so that would be a difference between what's proposed on their sheet one map and what you're recommending as a change to the map as a condition?
That's correct.
I understand.
And another change on that parcel was the expansion of the view corridor to, to the line, 45 feet from the top of bank.
Ah, I understand, so that shifts...
Add this other triangle.
Okay, that, I understand that a lot better now. Okay, thank you, appreciate that. So, my next question is on the building envelopes. So on the building envelopes, and I'm still looking at the map sheet, so if there's some conditions that modify that, please just correct me as I go, but it shows six feet between the building envelope and each property line. Is that because that's the standard setback?
Commissioner Pujo, that's, that's correct, that's the standard.
I think you're off.
E3 setback. Sorry, I was off mic. Commissioner Pujo, that is the standard E3 setback, um, for interior property lines.
Okay. And, um, let's see, that may be all my questions. I do have a comment about building envelopes that I want to get to at, at some point. Oh, one more question. I've heard commented, I think by the applicant, that the replacement of some of the trees are actually going to be at a larger size than the minimum required or currently required in the approved conditions. Is that change in that increased size, um, tree planting, is that reflected in the conditions as they're drafted now? Or is there a difference in what the condition language says between the minimum, I don't know if it was 15 gallon or what, in the original conditions and, and some sort of increased size now?
Well, there isn't. The recommendation came from Single Family Design Board, and the restoration plan will ultimately have to be approved by Single Family Design Board.
This is only in the area of the restoration, because those are the only trees that will... Why, why only the restoration plan area? Why not the...
Well, and, um, and each of the particular lots. But the, the restoration plan will, uh, account for the replacement oak trees, and Single Family Design Board was very clear at wanting even 24 and 36-inch box oak trees.
I see, okay, okay, thank you. And that's my last question, um, aside from, from comments later on, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I have questions for both the applicant and staff, but I think I'll ask the staff question first because of what I just heard. I'm confused on the conditions of approval that we saw on the screen that aren't in our packet, and how it relates to the ultimate development envelope for lot four. Are we looking at something that looks different than on this map? Is the view corridor then widened to match the 45-foot creek setback adjacent to San Remo?
Um, Madam Chair, Commissioner Bartlett, that's what was approved by the planning commission in 2010 to increase, um, to increase that view corridor. I'll, I'll bring up the condition.
But is, is that, is that this yellow line, that's the 45-foot line?
Uh, correct.
Right, that was the creek setback, but was also approved to expand the view corridor to that same line? That's, that's what I'm asking.
Here, um, the, the slide illustrates it. So, this is, this is what the planning commission approved in 2010. It doesn't match what's on the tentative map, so again, staff's recommending we carryforward the condition that this change before the map is finalized. So the planning commission had the view corridor expanded to, to the development envelope. So between the development envelope and the, and the creek, the, this whole area was included.
Okay, and that area then is also subject to the 42-inch height restriction that we see in the conditions of approval for the view corridor then?
Uh, that's correct.
All right, well, then my questions for the applicant, I know he had raised the issue that he wanted to talk about that triangular area and what they could and couldn't do in there, because it obviously affects the privacy of the house on lot four, and then while he's there, maybe he can also expand on what he didn't cover in the presentation, which was the addition in this proposal of adding, I think it's two guest parking places that weren't in the original approval, and the fact that you've also moved your northerly fence line three feet into your property to accommodate, you know, neighboring trees that would be in jeopardy if you'd put the fence on the line. So, maybe you can kind of run through those topics so that we can...
Okay, Madam Chair, Commissioner Bartlett, I'm going to address them in the exact reverse.
Okay.
We'll start with the fence at the northern property line. We constructed a fence at the northern property line to secure the site, and that fence went through and got approved at Single Family Design Board. Rather than constructing the fence directly on our property line, we set that fence back a few feet. The neighbor has several trees that were in place roughly on the property line, and were we to put the fence indirectly on the line, it would have resulted in the loss of those trees. One of our project design goals is to preserve as much existing screening in place as possible where it makes sense to do that. This, of course, is a critical location where that makes sense. So, we set the fence back, and the property, we've given him permission to use that property between the fence and the property line, so we're not, he's not getting our property, but we are giving him the rights to just continue to use it there, so we could save his trees. As to the guest parking, that was not in my presentation, because it's really being handled on a lot-by-lot basis, but, um, so that you know, we've, we've gotten, we, we keep hearing about the guest parking, the neighbors have made it clear that's an issue, we've studied all of our lots, and we are able to provide a guest parking space on lots one, two, and lot four. And the next time we go to Single Family Design Board, that will be reflected on all of those plans, but we know it works, and we've already designed it. Then, I'm sorry, could you refresh my memory on the first question? Oh, how, how come this looks different?
Try and get a review on lot four.
Okay, so, um, this here, I'm not sure why this didn't get picked up, but this isn't critical to us. We're happy to adjust this so that the yellow line matches that purple line. That's, that's fine, and it keeps it out of the view corridor. This triangle here, again, I, I've been on this project just beginning this year, and I'm not sure why that wasn't expanded. What I can tell you is that this purple area, this is what's been assessed in all of the historical report addendums, and that the HLC has approved, and by whatever mistake, that's actually what they've looked at and approved in terms of not having an impact on that facade. So, we could expand it, I don't, I mean, that's not ideal killer for us, but I, I would ask if we could keep it so that we don't have to revise all those reports, but also because we would like to have some flexibility in here to have a little bit taller plantings, and the goal really isn't privacy for us so much, it's, it's pretty private there. The, the real goal of that landscaping is screening of any structures from the public views. That's what we're concerned about with being able to provide there, and if we're limited to just 42 inches in height in that little triangle, which the, the historical professionals determined that that actually is not critical to preserving that view corridor, that sort of ties our hands in, in what we can put in as landscaping. So we, we would actually like that to be revised so that we can record this easement as it's shown here. You know, we, we would, we would live with it if we had to do otherwise, but I'd respectfully ask your commission to consider that when you make your decision today.
But what we are hearing from you is that you would be willing to sort of relinquish that overlapping triangle between the building development envelope and the view corridor?
Yeah, that's, that, that, we're happy to do that. Probably should have done that before it got here, to be realistic.
Okay, great, thank you.
Ms. Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I was glad to hear what Mr. Goran just said, because that was my question, I couldn't understand why that was still there in the view corridor, if we've agreed that that's, you know, to, to go with that, which was in the original approval. Also, there's been discussion about trees and screening and so on, one of the things that concerned me in the conditions was on page 17, um, item H4, "A site maintenance, the existing site structures shall be maintained and secured, any landscaping shall be watered and maintained until demolition occurs." And that seemed to me at this time, at any event, a little odd, but I, Mr. Gullett, does that, that apply? Because most, much of it is going to be removed in the process of grading. Does this apply simply to the plants that will be remaining?
Um, Madam Chair, Commissioner Lodge, this is a standard condition, it's in our standard conditions template, and it, it applies to all landscaping. We don't know what will ultimately be built on this property. I can, considering the times, I, I do think it would be appropriate to, to remove the words "be watered," so it could be, "Any landscaping shall be maintained until, until demolition occurs." So, the response to the drought is appropriate?
Okay, well, in, in looking at the plants there, I know they, they put a spore on, fronting on San Remo is, is considered part of what's needed for screening in a future house on lot four. And then the redwood tree that's there looks as if it needs water. So I certainly will hope that that would, I, I know you have a, an arborist helping you with all of this, but that seems to me important to keep it going. I, I see that Mr. Adams, the landscape architect, is there, and the condition on page 10 says "A replacement tree shall be a minimum of one gallon size." I've heard conflicting things about whether smaller ones grow faster and whether it's or not, it's a good thing to plant bigger sizes, which I understand the applicant is proposing to do. Could you comment on that, Mr. Adams?
Actually, we are using, in most cases, for the mitigation, oak tree plantings, the, the smaller size. However, we're also looking at transplanting oaks that are in the building envelope, transplantable oaks, kind of smaller oaks that we can move. We'd like to use those, and those are clearly denoted on the plan. And then there's, there's one tree that's a 24-inch box, and it's over in front, near, near San Remo, in front of that lot four house, and that'll just, that'll just, you know, be a little bit bigger there, just for a little bit more screening, and a little bit more, of much more full, you know, canopy. But we're excited, actually, about using transplanted oaks as much as possible from the site, because, you know, those, those are there, and they're kind of in the way, and we would like to use those. And those have some height, and they're healthy, and we think we can, we can move them successfully. But most of them are really the, the standard minimum size, and the specification is oaks from the South Coast, so.
No. That helps? It does, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Other questions from commissioners before I ask mine? No? Okay.
I have a question to staff about historic resources. Could you put that slide back up that discusses HLCs? I think it was HLCs, or, um, at any rate, the process we now have before us in terms of structure merit and what's under consideration? What was in 2010 and then currently? There we go. So I'm, I'm wanting to better understand, once a structure has been added to the city's list, and here, it hasn't yet been, right, Mr. Gullett?
Um, Madam Chair, it, it was added to the city's list last year, I believe.
So 2013. So we identified it, it had the potential, it's now been added. So I'm, I'm looking to understand what the obligations are of a property owner, uh, once a structure has been added.
Um, if a structure is added to the potential historic structures list, it does change the purview of the design board, so it comes under the purview of Historic Landmarks Commission, and Historic Landmarks Commission oversees all exterior changes proposed on the property. So there's...
What about maintenance obligations? So that the structure doesn't deteriorate to a point where it's no longer his, can be deemed historic, and then needs to be demolished or reconstr, and/or reconstructed?
Um, Madam Chair, I've ne, I've never seen, um, a maintenance obligation on an approved structure as a condition. Ms. Broker, Mr. Vincent may want to weigh in on that.
So that, that's not in our ordinance, it's in, or in our, in our policy. And the reason, the reason I'm asking this is because, not just in the city, but in the county, we have a number of, you know, in the last five to 10 years incidences where something has clearly is a historic resource and has been allowed to deteriorate, that basically it's demolition by, you know, benign neglect. And I had a concern back in 2010 about the remaining, the few remaining historic elements of this home, and what's come to pass is exactly what I anticipated, which is that now, the deterioration is... now, the deterioration is so advanced that it, it has to be taken down. Mr. Vincent, do you have any response for me on that?
Well, Madam Chair, members of the commission, I, I don't recall that we had in 2010 a structural engineering evaluation of the structure. What I recall in 2010 was the applicant was essentially promising to, to employ their best efforts to retain the facade, even though they were intending to demolish the rest of the structure. I don't believe that they had gone that extra step to having a, a structural evaluation. And so having that additional information, it's informing this applicant that it's not possible to retain the facade. Therefore, they've gone the measure of following the Secretary of Interior's directions on how to reconstruct the facade.
Right, okay. Okay, I think my other question is really about the tree replacement. I don't know if I'm missing something, kind of going back and forth between, let me tell you in the staff report what I'm looking at here. We have a reference on page six, under Environmental Resources element, to replacing 11 coast live oak trees with 33 live oak, a 15-gallon tree size, yet on the prior page, page five, we're talking about a different dimension. So we're 24-inch and 36-inch boxed oaks. Am I, is this like, am I not seeing which lots this is referencing? Or is it just not consistent language in terms of the size of the oaks? And I don't know if Mr. Adams wants to, yeah, could you, could you come forward, Mr. Adams? Thank you.
Just to reclarify, and this information is on the oak mitigation plan that was submitted. But basically, that language is calling for, for smaller oaks. But again, we're increasing the si- the size of one of the oaks in front, and we're also using transplants. And that's very clear on the oak mitigation plan. So we're really sizing up from the oaks that, right on the site, trying, trying to reuse those, because they have a certain height. And, and so we're trying to do an environmentally responsible thing by increasing where we can. And again, the only upsize tree that I believe is the 24-inch box.
Okay.
And the 36-inch box, I think we've gone to a transplant there. So it's really one 24-inch box.
Okay.
The majority are 15-gallon, and then we're going to be using nine, nine transplants right from the site of the existing oaks.
Okay.
Hopefully, that helps. We're kind of upsizing in an environmentally friendly way.
Okay, good to know.
And Madam Chair, I can, I can clarify a little bit more on the discrepancy. So the, the biological assessment performed in 2009, the biologist recommended a minimum 15-gallon, and it was the Single Family Design Board that was asking for the larger oaks, specifically for lot four and for public screening. So again, there's no condition that requires anything larger than the 15-gallon, we're just deferring to Single Family Design Board's discretion.
And Mr. Gullett, I don't know if I missed anything in our packet. Did the Creeks Division weigh in at all on where we are with this project and the new requests and effects relating the nearby creek?
Madam Chair, originally in 2010, staff was recommending a 50-foot creek setback for lots one, two, and four. We ultimately ended up with 45. The Creeks Division does prefer the larger setback for lot three. And then that, that puts us in, in competing interest between the historic resource and the increased creek setback.
Right, that's what I was wondering. But I didn't, they, they didn't seem vocal on, you know, at this point on this, so I, I didn't know if you had consulted them, and, okay. Okay, those are, Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just prompted another question. So, Dan, on the, the issue of the transplants, the nine transplants that were referenced, are, how are you handling those in mitigation? Are those part of, if I pull out a transplant and move it, is that part of your three-to-one, or is there a monitoring in the out-years to make sure the transplant lived, and then they'd come back and do three-to-one? How's that work?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Jordan, the restoration plan and oak tree replacement plan hasn't, hasn't been finalized yet. And the conditions do require that oak seedlings and saplings removed be replaced minimum one-to-one when their four inches are less. I don't, that's not answering your, your question either, but the, the transplanted oaks would potentially qualify as 15-gallon oaks. It's a matter of whether or not they qualify as 15-gallon oaks, then they would be considered for that three-to-one ratio. They're, they're certainly preferred to oaks that are coming from off-site, because they're naturalized to, to this environment, they grew up here. And I, I believe that the suggestion came from Single Family Design Board to explore transplanting.
So the number I hear being bounced around, this 10 or 11 that end up in 30 or 33 oaks, that does not include the potential nine transplants?
Yeah, it does. It does include the, the transplants.
You're gonna, you're gonna tell me you're mitigating for the transplants from the get-go? All right. Come on up, Jared. Explain this to me.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Jordan, most projects don't have onsite transplant oaks as part of their oak tree mitigation plans. They just get oak trees from nurseries or off-site. So we, and, and it took me a while to grasp this too, and try to get through this, which is why I tried to reconcile it really clearly in the presentation. What happens first is you have to determine how many oak trees have to be mitigated. So we determine that number, and the number we come up with is 10 or 11, if you count that mystery tree. Those have to be mitigated at three-to-one. At that point, let's just pretend we weren't transplanting anything at all. We would do that at a minimum of 15-gallon size, three-to-one, and we'd have 33 trees. What we're doing instead is, instead of getting 33 trees from some nursery, nine of those 33 mitigation trees are, are other trees on our site, which themselves don't require any mitigation, but are 15-gallon or larger trees. And we're using those trees instead of getting some other tree as part of our mitigation. Does that make sense?
Sure. Then I've heard also why people go, I'm about, this, I'm about the most ignorant guy you could be talking to about this, okay, landscape stuff. But I've heard that oaks are particularly susceptible to not transplanting well, too. So you have these nine trees that you're front-loading with our blessing, and two, three, five years down, whatever, down the road, they fail and they can't be saved, and who's around to remedy that?
Okay.
Or what's going to remedy that?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Jordan, those trees are simply transplants, like any other transplant, and therefore subject to the same conditions as any other transplant. So while some projects have no, no transplant trees on them, they just get a 15-gallon tree from off-site, that new mitigation tree is subject to the monitoring requirements of the trees in the mitigation plan. So our transplant trees, which are the mitigation trees, they just happen to be coming from our site, are also subject, they're mitigation trees, so they're subject to the exact same condition. We don't get some sort of exception or break because we happened to get them from our site.
Oh, now, looking back over at Mr. Gullett, where is that transplant condition, or where do you, where do you connect those two dots four years down the road? Is there, they're not necessarily in, well, they might be. They might all go, be going into the conservation easement zone, right? Maybe, maybe not, I don't know.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Jordan, we have a map that shows where they're going. Some of them are going in there, some of them are going to enhance screening along the property.
The ones that aren't going there are not necessarily part of that monitoring and mitigation plan.
Well, they're still part of the oak tree mitigation plan, and they're, they're still subject to the same conditions. If we just said right now-
So I'm not, so I'm not putting my finger on that plan or those conditions, I guess, is what I need some help with.
If staff could walk you to that condition, that would be great.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Jordan, the landscape plan compliance condition is on page five of Exhibit A, which speaks to tree protection.
Page five, condition eight?
Condition seven.
Okay, but that's a, that references a, a plan that can be changed, right? After we leave here? So, so, so help me if I'm missing something here. So you go back a page, and we have replacement conditions that talk about X number of trees we know we're going to pull out of the ground, we're going to mitigate those at three-to-one. You go forward a page, and some of those trees that you talked about on the prior page are transplant trees that may or may not survive the transplant, but they're going to be subject to potential mitigation in the future on a landscape plan, which is not in place yet, and could, could develop into something else contradictory to the page before, because it's not a condition. Is that an accurate assessment?
Could you pose that question?
Oh, probably not, but-
Madam Chair, members of the commission, the, the condition on page five, the landscape plan compliance, tree protection section, specifically references a, a tree, oak tree inventory and mitigation plan prepared by Bill Spiewack dated September 28, 2009. So that, that plan, there's your plan. I don't know if it's sufficient or not. I'll look to staff to help us with that. It, I, given the fact that these, these conditions of approval are shown as, you know, showing changes from the conditions of approval that were put into place in 2010, I assume it was looked at, at that point, and that that mitigation plan addresses both the replacement of the trees, and it is standard for mitigation plans to address whether or not the mitigation, whether or not the transplanting is successful over a period of time.
Mr. Gullett?
So that's, that's my goal here, Dan. I think you got the goal, is that we have these nine trees that are subject to mitigation, but are being blessed out of mitigation initially to be transplanted. And what happens three, four years down the road if, if they, the transplant fails? And is there actually a tool to come back and say that those trees still need to be mitigated for?
Madam-
If you're gonna tell me that this plan that's referenced on that next page, that was done in 2009, addresses a transplant, and, and a plan also to relook at that, then I'm okay with, I'm all right, as long as that's true.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Jordan, I need to clarify one thing. None of these trees that are being used as the transplants are subject to mitigation, or all of these trees are trees which you can just cut down and not mitigate at all. And instead of doing that, we're transplanting them. There, we're not, none of these trees that are being transplanted are saying, well, that's a tree that would ordinarily have to be mitigated, and now it doesn't because you're transplanting it. What they are is they are trees that were going to be obliterated from the face of the earth before, and our proposal now is to retain them and transplant them. And if you want to clarify in the conditions, that the transplanted oaks be subject to the same conditions as any other mitigation oaks, that would be fine.
I, I think I misunderstood the nine transplants then.
Okay, so-
For 10 minutes.
Okay, does that make sense now?
Yes.
Great.
Thanks, thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Pujo?
Thank you. Just want to chime in on this one point. We're looking on page five, which is the landscape plan, but I'm also looking on page two, under San Roque Creek setbacks, condition B2. And one of the things that I actually focus on this condition for is that this one references the now 45-foot setback and the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan by Althouse and Mead that then goes to the Creeks Division for approval. That's my understanding. What, what's been difficult for me to grasp with this wording is what I believe is buried in there is the Creeks Division's ability to review that plan and determine if anything is missing. And in the title, since it's a mitigation monitoring and reporting plan, from title alone, I am reading into it that that means some sort of monitoring over time and success ratio with the trees that are transplanted or planted new. So to me, that's where that question comes up, because that plan needs to have some sort of two-year, five-year, whatever Creeks Division feels is appropriate, monitoring component. And if those trees don't survive, that's where I think the requirement to then replace them again and try again would come in. And I don't know if that condition needs a little bit of tweaking to make that more clear, but that's what I've been trying to grasp out of that, but I don't know if that's the way the condition is usually interpreted.
Madam Chair, could I address that? Okay. In, on page seven, under D or requirements prior to permit issuance, and on the next page, numbers eight and nine speak to the monitoring of that, of that plan. So we do ask for an executed contract, monitoring schedule, consistent with the plan.
I, I see it there. So that, that references back to that same monitoring plan that gets reviewed by Creeks?
Right.
Okay, to me, that's kind of what we're talking about, is give it a try. If it doesn't work, do something else to make sure that the trees are, you know, go to maturity.
That's the intent.
Other questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Broker?
Sorry, I just want to add one more layer of protection to the conversation, because on a project-specific basis, we will certainly have conditions like this in there for, you know, to make sure that the transplanted or replacement trees survive and monitor their health. I also do want to point out that we do have a chapter in the municipal code, chapter 2211, that's maintenance of approved landscape plans, that applies to any approved landscape plan in the city. The requirement for the owner to maintain the landscape plan, and in that, does require replacement of any trees that die or that are removed, or if the plan is later altered for some reason without approval, can be enforced upon. So there's, again, also a code-based requirement that an approved landscape plan be maintained as approved.
Any other questions on this or any other item before we go to comments? Okay, how about comments? Anybody ready to start comments? We can always come back and add. Mr. Bartlet?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, in looking at the revisions proposed, I see most of the changes to the approved tentative map to be refinements of a further advanced project, and I see the scale of what is being proposed is very similar to what was depicted when we originally approved the dry lot subdivision. There were images of proposed two-story homes, even though they weren't part of the application, but that's what the commission anticipated when we approved the four-lot subdivision. So I think most of the changes we see are minor refinements, and I think most fall into the category of improvements. I think that the adjustments to the lot lines are very minor, and their attempts to more equalize the lot sizes and work that in accordance with the house designs that are being developed. I don't think that has an impact. I think the applicant has reflected the increases in the creek setbacks and most of the other conditions that we imposed on the project, and that's why the exhibits look a little bit different now. And I think the big discrepancy on the grading is the fact that they've included, you know, what's being proposed for the homes, which was not included when we looked at the prior review of this project. It was only subject to the grading necessary for a driveway. So I don't see those as being substantial changes. I think the real issues for me are related to lot four, which is up at the street, and my recommendation would be to eliminate the overlap on lot four, where the building, the development envelope overlaps the 40-foot view easement, and that the view easement remain the consistent 40 feet as viewed from San Remo Drive and not be splayed out to match the- to match the face of the development envelope on Lot Four. And I think that would match the exhibits that we have in front of us and that have been reviewed by the landmarks committee. So I, and I think that, eliminating that overlap on the development envelope, I think is, helps somewhat justify the expansion of the other building envelope and the elimination of the three oak trees to give you a more developable site for the building. I think not widening that view easement on the front face at San Remo also provides more privacy to the future residents on Lot Four, and I think the, really, the view corridor is not so we can view the house on Lot Four, it's to focus that view to the reconstructed historic residents on Lot Three. So I think the keeping the view easement at a straight forty feet all the way back is what I would be recommending for approval, and I think all the other issues are tactical in nature. I think the fire department has substantiated the access requirements for the driveway, and I think the stormwater and all the landscape mitigation. Others may wanna add more on the oak trees, but I think the applicant has got a cushion over mitigation right now already built in, and I like the fact that we can actually use sort of native oaks to this site as much as possible. So I'll be able to support the changes to the tentative map.
Commissioner Jordan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with everything Commissioner Bartlet said, and I too just find these changes pretty, pretty minor, and I'm appreciative of the applicant who actually walks in here with some changes that could be, could be worked against him and, but has still shown a willingness to adapt to some of the other concerns that are brought up. The pluses, the additional area of the, of the conservation easement, protection of that view corridor, I particularly like the fact that you're gonna leave the elevation on Lot Three where it is while you're playing with the, the elevations on the other, the other three that keeps, that will keep, for at least that view corridor, that will keep that, that rebuilt structure sitting up there and present to passerbyes. My really only requirements are the same as Bruce's, and that's that you relinquish that little triangle that's overlapping in the view corridor. I am sure you're gonna hear more about the map corrections as we go further that were talked about earlier, and I would be supportive also, either if you're just willing to get it into the record or if it needs to be part of our action today, and that's that for sure you're recognizing that mystery tree and mitigating three more for it so that the number's really thirty-three and doesn't end up being thirty somewhere, and that if you really have a, a no-impact willingness to add guest parking spots on Lot One, Two, and Four, that that's part of the arrangement going back down to design boards, too. I think those would all be great additions to the, to the project and would help out with some of the neighbors' concerns. Not all of them, but, you know, I think that discussion for the neighbors that are here still needs to take place at the design board level. That's the people that are making the decision on size, bulk, and scale. So I'll be supporting the, the project. I think it's, it's a pretty easy, pretty easy and pretty inconsequential revisions to, to offer. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I generally support the, the comments of Commissioners Bartlet and Jordan as well. I have a couple of specific items that, to me, in addition with the applicant cleaning up the map and the conditions now that they're getting closer to actual recordation, that I think would make, in my estimation, the project more clear in what I believe we are intending to do overall with this site. And it really just comes down to two items. The first is one that I asked about and mentioned earlier today, is that that forty-five-foot setback line that is bordered by the edge of the conservation easement needs to be a continuous north-south line through the property. And what that does is better delineate the area of restoration and other structural limitations. As far as the view corridor goes, that's the second key item, and I agree with Commissioner Bartlet that I don't see additional value gained by expanding it further to the, to the east. I think that those parallel lines kind of work well the way they are, but once that conservation easement line is drawn north to south, what that would in effect do is, say, that little swath on the frontage road would allow landscaping, it wouldn't have the view corridor restrictions, but it would have the conservation easement restrictions, and that should allow some of the screening vegetation that the applicant mentioned earlier if it was determined that that was the landscape plan that eventually was proposed and, and accepted at the design review boards. So another second item on this is I, when I look at the building envelopes, I studied these a bit, and I, and I have a pretty long history of dealing with building envelopes. And from my perspective, a building envelope should be placed when there's a particular nexus as to why you want that envelope on the property. What is it protecting? In the original map, I think the envelopes were also drawn to avoid removal of certain trees. And I don't think we have that now. Those lines are kind of straightened out to right angles on the new plan, whereas before they curved around some tree canopies and whatnot. So the rest of the building envelopes with that topic kind of taken away off the table right now are basically setbacks. So you've got the cor, the, the view corridor and the conservation easement area that are protecting two really key parts of what this lot split has been focused on, and the rest by default is just a basic residential lot development. So I actually don't see any need for those building envelopes, and in fact, I would say that putting building envelopes on just because they're drawn, if we don't really know what the real extra purpose is, actually can be a disservice because later, when you try to understand why is it there, you can't really put your hands on it and it creates confusion. So my suggestion and my comment would be maintain the conservation easement north to south at the forty-five feet, maintain the view corridor as drawn, and eliminate the building envelopes and let it default to typical setbacks.
Anything further, Ms. Pujo?
No, that's it.
Okay. Ms. Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Pujo, what about Lot Three where the setback is thirty-five feet? To leave the house, have it be able to be reconstructed exactly where it is?
I understand. My under, my understanding, and, and if this is incorrect, then, then it's an important point, but my understanding is the reconstruction of the house needs to be in the exact location as the original house, then, and that's separately defined. If that is the case, then I think that, to me, takes care of that.
Okay, so that, so that we don't need to specifically say that it's a thirty-five-foot setback for that lot?
Sorry, I understand what you're saying. I think maybe staff does too right now. There is, there is a reduction of the conservation easement in that area of Lot Three, I believe, to thirty-five, three, yes. Okay, I'm sorry, yes, correct. That would still need to be part of the continuous north-south line, but it would curve to thirty-five feet around Lot Three, if that's the right way to say it. That's what my understanding is. I don't mean to change that to forty-five feet.
Okay, thank you. Other comments before I make mine? No? I wanna go back to 2010 for just a moment because I had some concerns back then about what we were asked to approve. I felt at the time, and I still have some discomfort with the size of the development on each of, on each of these parcels, especially with, at the time, was, I thought, an important residential historic resource for our community, and I was dismayed, and you can, you'll hear from me today, I'm still dismayed at what has happened regarding the deterioration of that historic resource. Nonetheless, we, we have to deal with the reality before us, so if I just look very practically at what's being requested of us today, the tentative subdivision map and the conditions of approval, I don't have anything to add to what my colleagues have said. I think there have been some improvements, and also, Mr. Goran, I appreciate your, your clients' flexibility in accommodating some of the concerns of the neighbors. I'm just going to ask that the guest parking spaces be, on lots One, Two, and Four, be followed through with single-family design, and also, in the email we received from the Edwards at 216 Adair Drive, there was reference to the nighttime street pollution, so to speak, regarding the street lamps, and I would be asking single-family design board to look closely at lighting, which I know they ordinarily do, but in this case, because there's some neighbors' concerns, I would ask that that be part of what's, what's, what's called into evaluation. I think that's it for now. I, you know, I'm, Mr. Goran mentioned that Lot Four is an awkward area, I think that was the phrase you used. Well, for me, this whole development on this property in this location is awkward, and it was awkward in 2010 for me, and it's awkward now, but I, I feel sort of boxed in, in, in making a decision today, but on balance, I agree with most of what my colleagues have put forward. Mr. Jordan, are you?
I'd be happy to attempt a motion, but I'm concerned with the idea of just removing the building envelope, so is there a reaction to that from everybody involved?
Or maybe even either staff or, or Mr. Vincent?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Jordan, the development envelopes, the development envelopes aren't defined in the conditions. They're essentially, as Ms. Pujo stated, they're, they're areas where the previous applicant and engineer determined essentially couldn't be built on, so it excluded the oak tree areas, which are protected anyway by our conditions. It excludes the conservation area, the setbacks, the view corridor, and it also is limited by the, the driveway on the west side. So it's, I think we, we get there by looking at the ground rather than, rather than the figure. We, we're saying you, you can't do things in certain areas rather than here are areas you can do things.
So you would find that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay, how about the applicant? And I see people-
Mr. Goran is shaking his head yes, for those who can't see-
Yes, I heard the rattle, and then, so, so I, I think I'll just sit, 'cause I saw a couple of people sit up, so see if they have any reaction to that suggestion, too.
Mr. Bartlet, would you like to comment further?
Yeah, I thought actually that was a good suggestion. It simplifies what we're looking at. All we see are the easements and then the, the perimeter setback that abounds the larger parcel, and everything else is buildable. So I think it helps make the diagram simpler. We don't have to close all the gaps between the building envelopes for the conservation easement and all those things. So I, I think that's a, a great suggestion. I think the only area that gets a little odd is down here with the angled sewer easement, but, you know, you can't build on that either, so it defines itself. So I, I think it's a, a good cleanup act, actually, so.
Mr. Vincent, any unintended consequences potentially for us in doing that, if we include that in the motion? That from your experience?
Madam Chair, by definition, unintended consequences are those that we can't foresee now.[1506.58][1506.58](laughter)
Well, we, we may not intend them, but from your, from your wisdom and your experience, perhaps you could say, there's been a case where-
No, I think that-
We hadn't foreseen it, but now we can.
No, I think the commissioner's points and, and the points made by Mr. Gullett are, are, are true, that the, the building envelopes have largely been defined by the constraints and existing issues presented by the project, and that simply drawing more lines on, on the property doesn't really add much more, that the, if we follow through with the conditions as they're written, that they take care of the development envelopes.
With no, no impact on conservation easement or any of these other important environmental considerations?
The conservation easement's defined by itself and is independent of the building envelopes.
Okay, very good.
Madam Chair, if I could just add, in the interest of full disclosure, what that would do or could potentially change in the future with a six-foot interior setback in the E3 zone, it could potentially allow development up to six feet along the interior property line. However, as the project's proposed, the driveway is within that area and already pushing the location of future homes a certain distance away from that western property line, so it's not likely that we would see structures within up to six feet of that western property line, but it would just allow the build-out of the homes consistent with the E3 zone like any other lot in this neighborhood.
Great.
Just for disclosure, as shown on that diagram now, they're showing more than six feet from that western property line.
That's the kind of context I was looking for. Thank you, that's helpful. Mr. Bartlet, oh, no, I'm sorry, Mr., I don't know now, between Mr. Jordan and Mr. Bartlet, somebody wants to go next.
Well, I had one follow-up item-
Yes, please, Mr. Bartlet.
To tag on to your comment about the rate of deterioration that we've seen on the site over the years since we've been reviewing this, it really reminds me of what former Commissioner Stella Larson used to talk about a lot, and the fact that we really need a demolition by neglect ordinance, because it's, it is painful to see historic properties like this fall into such disrepair, and it's nothing to do with the current applicant. I mean, this has been a lot of years of neglect that have caused this situation to happen, and it's a shame when you have that valuable piece of property have to be totally rebuilt from scratch. So maybe it's a good impetus to us to kind of renew that idea that maybe there is some sort of ordinance with a broader scope that needs to be developed, because there's a lot of jewels in this town that could go the way that this project has gone.
Maybe we could take up that discussion at a lunch meeting, Ms. Brooke?
Potentially, we could, but I do also wanna just make you aware of a portion of the municipal code within the Historic Landmarks Commission jurisdiction, or it's chapter twenty-two-twenty-two and subsection zero-seven-zero, repair and maintenance of lands, landmarks and structures of merit. It does address that designated landmarks and structures of merit do need to be kept in good repair. The home on this particular property is neither of those, though, so it is on the potential list of historic structures, and there are elements of the home that are eligible for structure of merit, but it's not technically subject to this code section, but we do have some code language to help ensure that landmarks and structures of merits are kept in good repair.
Well, then, what took place in 2013, which I just thought, I heard, I thought, I thought Mr. Gullett mentioned that.
Madam Chair, I believe it was 2013.
Last year?
The, the, the house on this property was added to the city's potential list, so that's the first step. It wasn't actually listed as a structure of merit.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe the historic resources element addresses neglect, just demolition by neglect, but I don't remember in just what way.
Well, again, maybe we could take that up at a lunch meeting because I think there's, you know, there have been enough cases and we know what we're talking about here. Okay, um, so, is anybody interested in motion, Mr. Jordan?
Muddle through this and then get corrected. So, um-
Okay.
Move to approve the revised tentative subdivision map and the amendment to the conditions of approval with the revisions that were shown by staff earlier, making the findings that are found in the staff report on section- Making the findings that are found in the staff report on Section 11, having to do with public street waivers for the Parcels 1, 2, and 3, the street frontage modifications for Parcels 1, 2, and 3, and the tentative map. And with direction that could, would involve either additional work on the conditions or directions to staff, and that would be removal of the building envelopes for Lots 1, 2, 3, and 4, corrections to the map to show the 45-foot or 35-foot easement continuously from north to south, assurance of the mitigation number of oaks for 33 to reflect the missing or disputed tree, adding of one guest parking spot on Parcels 1, 2, and 4, relinquishing the view corridor and what was before the building envelope overlap in the view corridor on Parcel 4, and maintaining the existing view corridor location at San Remo. I think I caught everything, I'm not sure.
Second?
Second.
Thank you.
Any discussion on that motion?
Under, under discussion?
Yes, under discussion.
We want to clarify, the conservation easement is a continuous 45 feet, with the exception of the 35-foot dimension at the periphery of the existing historical house that is being replaced.
Okay, rather than just 45 to 35 to 45, right? Yep.
Just a moment.
Okay.
Any other discussion on that motion? Ms. Pujol?
Yes, on the portion regarding the guest parking, is that a direction to consider it or a direction to do it?
Oh, a direction to add it, definitely. I got, I heard, I saw the head nodding out there that that was acceptable, and I'm, I'm happy to horse trade for that.
Okay, thank you. I think, I think that's it. Thank you.
I'm not sure it's appropriate for us in the middle of a motion, a vote, to have the applicant come up. Mr. Vincent, is, is it okay if we take a question to clarify the motion before we vote or procedurally?
It's up to you. I mean, I, I would hate to get done with this and then have to come back next week or some other time.
We would, too. So, Mr. Goran, come forward.
Let's ask a question.
My single question has to do with the view easement and Commissioner Jordan's language, that it remain as existing. I believe that could be unclear, because as existing in the conditions, it requires it to go splayed out at San Remo.
So, so, but I think you guys, so staff knows where, so the conversation was down at the other end on having it remain as it was in 2010 and its location on San Remo, right? Not be-
Madam Chair, I think, I think Commissioner Jordan is saying as shown on the revised tentative map. Is that correct?
Thank you.
As shown on the revised tentative map. My only-
Relatively unscathed, I made that through there, huh?
My only question to staff as part of this discussion before we go to a vote is, do you see it in the far-ranging discussion about oak trees and mitigation and replacement? With each piece of the language in the conditions of approval, Page 2, Page 3, Page 5, Page 8, there are different references to, to all of this, do we need to specify in the motion that these have to synchron, kind of synchronize and align? Because there are different dates for different reports that are, that predate the current proposal. You see what I'm getting at? And I can tell you specifically which sections I'm referring to if you, maybe to the maker of the motion, if you need me to. Well, I'll just, I'll just go ahead. Page 2, under Design Review B, Number 2, San Rokey Creek setback, Page 3. This is, would be 3C Oak Tree Replacement. Then we go to Page 5, under Number 7, which is Landscape Plan Compliance A, is Tree Protection. And then we go to Page 8, and under Community Development Department, we have Numbers 8 and 9, Arborist Monitoring and Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting. I would just ask if the maker of the motion on the, the second, consider directing staff to ensure that there are no discrepancies among all of those portions of the condition of approval pertaining to tree replacement, mitigation, and monitoring and reporting.
I see staff nodding, so it's okay with me?
Yes, is that okay? Yes, Ms. Lodge?
It's okay with me, too.
Okay, thank you.
Important point.
So with that, are we, it looks like we're ready for a vote? So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That passes unanimously. You have a project moving forward. This project is appealable within 10 calendar days to the City Council. Thank you. Okay, as we wrap up this item, we'll take a moment and let everybody who is here on this item find their way to the back. Our final item is our administrative agenda, Committee and Liaison Reports. Do we have a staff hearing officer liaison report today?
Nothing this week, no meeting this week.
Any other committee and liaison reports? Mr. Thompson?
Thank you. The Single Family Design Board met Monday, and of the six items on the agenda, one was of interest to us on 3435 Marina Drive. I gave them a brief rundown of our rationale for continuing the hearing on the coastal development permit with direction back to them that they look at a revised plan that didn't push the mass and bulk of the structure towards Cliff Drive and the reason that we didn't want it to be pushed towards Cliff Drive. And the applicant architect proposed a revised plan that was more along the line of his second plan. So Plan 4 is sort of like Plan 2. The biggest objection from the public was the fact of the small second-story pushout for the master bedroom suite. So they sent it back for a little more review and potential reduction of that second floor, and it should be coming back to the Single Family Design Board in about two weeks. And I guess at that time, after they finish looking at it, we'll get it back for the rehearing on the coastal development permit.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Mr. Bartlett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last week at the ABR meeting, the one project that would have been of interest to us was the 240 West Alamar project that came back. And unfortunately, they were unable to review it because they didn't have a quorum. Two of the, two of the five ABR members worked on the project, so they had to recuse themselves. So it got continued until next week's ABR. So if you're interested, you may want to tune in and see, see how that goes.
Thank you very much. I attended the Water Commission meeting Monday of this week, and it was a special meeting. It was held here in council chambers so that members of the public could come and provide input to the Water Commission. There were lengthy reports and updates given. Most of the content contained, we had heard just recently from Joshua Hagmark. I will say that what continues to be expressed, both verbally by members of the public and you can see it in the media, are questions and concerns about sort of equality of, of pain and conservation and rates, et cetera, in terms of how hard some are working to conserve while, while others aren't. And then also some new projects, new development is coming online with new water use. And so I, I only expect this to ratchet up as the council considers stage three drought regulations, and I'm sure the planning will hear more about this as well. So with that, if there's nothing further, no special announcements by staff or anyone else, this meeting is adjourned, and the Planning Commission's next meeting, as scheduled, is August 21st. But stay tuned by going to the city's website. Thank you.